I'd like to call the meeting to order. So far, a little bit after the back. Carol, do you want to report out from our closed session that we were in?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. The closed session, no action, was taken by the City Council. The City Council has adjourned that closed session to Friday morning at 9:30 a.m. to be conducted by Zoom.
Thank you. And now I'd like to open the special meeting of the City Council, San Marino City Council today at 6:00 p.m. due and call the meeting to order and ask that everybody here please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. Can we have a roll call, please?
Absolutely.
Councilmember Wong?
Here.
Councilmember Jacobowski?
Here.
Councilmember Chau?
Here.
Vice Mayor Yudi?
Here.
Madam Mayor Shepard Roney?
Here.
Thank you. The agenda was posted 24 hours prior to this meeting. The following locations, City Hall, the Crowe Public Library, and the Recreation Department. The special meeting agenda is also posted on the city's website. To ensure that everybody, including those joining us remotely, are able to hear all speakers clearly, please speak directly into the microphones when you address the council or have them make a statement. And public comments are being accepted three ways. Be it email, due to COVID-19 advisory for social distancing. So if you would like to email your comments, you may do so by, and it will be read into the record, and you could do so by emailing the cityclerk@cityofsanmarino.org. We also accept comments from those who are joining us on Zoom. We have staff facilitating this meeting for Internet users and callers to ensure that everybody can hear and participate. Please note that all comments are going to be limited to three minutes and that they will be timed by city staff. Once that timing, if you hear an alarm go off, please do wrap up because we have a long agenda today and we would like to have everybody have the ability to speak and participate whether they're at home or with us today. And we have several members of the audience, so I thank you for coming. Also, I would like to ask our Acting City Clerk Merlot to explain in details of how the public comment will work for each item. And I thank you for everyone's patience as we navigate through tonight and the new process from COVID. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. For each item on the agenda, there will be time for public comment. All comments will be limited to three minutes and will be timed by staff. We will accept comments in three ways. First, we'll take in-person comments for each item. And to do that, please fill out a speaker card, which is located in the lobby, and turn it in to me. Second, we will also accept comments via email sent to cityclerk@cityofsanmarino.org. And that email address is also found on the agenda. Those will then be read into the record, but we must receive them before the public comment period for that particular item ends. And those comments may be summarized, if necessary, to limit it to under three minutes. We will then ask for comments from our Zoom participants. When we ask for public comments via Zoom, there are two ways you can let us know you'd like to speak. You can use the raise hand feature, which is a button that's found by clicking on Participants, and then it is in the bottom right side of the screen. And that will let us know you'd like to speak. We just ask that you please do not use this feature until we've asked for public comment so that we can see it and know which item you are asking to speak on. As a second option, you can send a typed message via the chat box that will go directly to me and you could let us know you'd like to speak on a particular agenda item. And again, comments will only be accepted until the end of the public comment period for that item. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So the first agenda item or agenda part is the public comments. And the city always welcomes public comments. Members of the public may address the City Council by completing a public comment card, as outlined, and giving it to the city clerk. And at this time, the public may address us on any item that's not on the agenda for this evening. So do we have any, anyone here who wishes to speak at this time on something that is not an agendized item? Seeing no one, would you check and see if we have any comments submitted by email?
I do have two comments received earlier by email and one through the mail, which were distributed to the council earlier, as well as posted on our website. And they're in the public binder out in the lobby. One from Ms. Shirley Jagels regarding a fire on Mission, and the other from Ms. Grazia La Almanza regarding the San Marino Center. I do not have any new emails at this time.
All right, do you want to, are you going to read those or are they?
I can, if you'd like. They were, since they were distributed, we don't have to, but I can certainly read them if you'd like.
Time to write, if you'd like.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Okay. The first letter is from Ms. Shirley Jagels. It says, Dear Chiefs, thank you for everything you do to lead public safety in our police force for the public welfare. Your departments play a critical role in our community. I would like to bring your attention, to your attention something which I have discussed with prior mayor and council member, Dr. Wong. There was a fire on the afternoon of Sunday, August 29th, 2020, at the Crestmont Office Building on Mission Street. I happened to be at my new building at 2570 Mission Street sweeping the sidewalk. I walked my dog over to see it, but I did not see anything about it in the subsequent weekly briefing by our current city manager, or within the San Marino Tribune's police blotter. As I understand it, pine needles were being deliberately lit a fire on the first floor inside this office building while a lady attorney I know was working there. I know the woman and she told me. She stated that she called 911 when she smelled smoke, and I did observe a South Pasadena fire engine coming from the west, and a firefighter later identified as Battalion Chief Eric Zantison responding. San Marino Fire may have responded as well, but it wasn't clear to me, and I did not observe them present. And if there is a record of their response, I would appreciate confirmation. At the scene, I spoke to and pointed out to Battalion Chief Zantison my concern about the graffiti on the air siren, which had been observable for months and documented by me as early as August 1, 2020. He told me he would report it for me, which he did later that evening. It's not sure why that noticeable graffiti had not been removed, but thankfully, it was not gang activity that caused this fire. It seems to me that this is a potential arson situation. We would like the culprits identified and accountable for this reckless behavior, putting our community, our business owners, and commercial building owners at risk. A confirmation that our police chief is investigating would be a comfort. City Clerk, please confirm receipt and add this to the distributed public letters within the digital agenda packet the next time the police or fire chief have a presentation before the council. Thank you. Sincerely, Shirley Jagels. The second letter is from Ms. Grazia La Almanza. It says, To Mrs. Gretchen Shepherd-Romney, Mayor, and San Marino City Council members. I ask for help from Acting City Clerk, Mrs. Amanda Merlot, to read you my letter. I am handicapped and both my husband and I have serious health issues. This is the reason why we were not at the previous San Marino City Council meetings. We totally agree with Mrs. Shirley Jagel's letter to the San Marino Tribune editor, published 9/17/2020, regarding the San Marino Center. First, the San Marino City Council only had one firm to do the restoration of the former San Marino Women's Club. No EIR studies were done. The initial cost of about $4 million is now $5.3 million. The City Council members are very extravagant, spending the San Marino residents' money. I was born and raised in Italy. Thank goodness the city leaders in Europe allowed the engineering, engineers, and architects freedom. We do not have to look alike with each other. This is why we have the beautiful monuments that people come and admire. Sincerely, Grazia La Almanza. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other comments submitted or anybody would like to speak?
We do not have any further email comments. And I do not see anybody requesting to speak on Zoom.
Thank you very much. And I will close public comment and ask Dr. Merlot to give us the city manager's report.
Yes, thank you, ma'am. Good evening, everybody. The time of everybody who's here is short, but I do just want to introduce our newest member, the identity team, San Marino New Community Services Director. Mr. Brian Haworth is sitting in back trying to coordinate the facilities and figure out the microphone issue. But Brian, if you would stand up and wave, we look forward to you. We can get to know him a little bit better. And he just started with us on Monday, so he's absorbing a whole lot of new information, joining us most recently from the city of Central City. And I'm delighted to have him here. Thank you very much.
Next item is motion to wait for the readings. Do I have a motion and a second? Councilmember Wong moves. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Vice Mayor Yudi, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, it's unanimous. Thank you. Next, we proceed with our consent calendar. And I would like to pull item four for discussion. Do any council members wish to pull any other items from the consent? Seeing none, we will proceed. Can I get a motion then to approve the remainder of the items?
I move to approve my consent calendar, items one through 13, with the exception of item four.
Do I have a second?
A second.
I think we should do a roll call because it does involve contracts. Wonderful. Councilmember Wong?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Chau?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Yudi?
Yes.
Madam Mayor Shepard Roney?
Yes.
All right, thank you very much. And I believe I can ask for agenda item four. Receive and file the financial report. So Director Chung, if you would please give us that presentation. Thank you.
Great, thank you, ma'am. Just put the mic on up for me, please. That I'll just do my big introductions here. Tonight, the city treasurer and I will be presenting the financial status report for the fourth quarter. This covers the months of April 2020 through June 2020. And so if you're wondering why in October are we presenting the three months, back in June and, June through, April through June, is because in August, as council went dark, and then in September, finance was busy closing the books for the fiscal year and doing the annual audit. So we were able to complete the audit at the time. So the report and the SAC report, all the numbers are basically final numbers. So no number should be changing from here on forward. Also, I wanted to mention that we had an exit interview with our auditors about a couple of weeks ago. And I'm happy to report that we had zero findings. And that's from last year, we had zero, and this year, we continue that trend to this year as well. And in December, I will be coming back to council to present the annual financial statement, which basically closes fiscal year 1920. So I'll be presenting, I'll be presenting the financial report, and the city treasurer will be presenting the cash investments for this period of April through June. As you're aware, this was the fiscal period where pretty much the world felt in fiscal impact of COVID. Not only fiscal, but of course, just overall COVID pandemic impact. And as you are aware, there's various macroeconomic data. Just to point out a few, as you know, the unemployment rate was pretty much skyrocketed in June to 11.2%. County of LA was forecasting to about a billion-dollar less in sales tax. And there were various agencies throughout the nation that were impacted, especially if you're focused on tourism and retail, the brick and borders were impacted considerably. We were very much in crisis mode at that time. But looking back now in October, the bright side, I believe, is that the recovery is on its way. I do feel that the fiscal impact is a little more clear for agencies and also, of course, here in San Marino. We do see various economic indicators that a V-shaped-like recovery has begun. And I do feel in that realm that we do see that V-shaped recovery. Just honing into San Marino, we weren't immune to the COVID fiscal impact, but we were very fortunate. And I've expressed this in the past during the budget study sessions. But revenues continue, for our property taxes, continue to be intact. But there were certain weaknesses in sales tax, business license taxes, recreation programs, as recreation pretty much came to a halt. And then library revenues, as well as the library facility closed as well. And passport revenues pretty much stopped as travel around the world has pretty much stopped at that period of time. Investment income also pretty much declined quite a bit. The treasury yield at that time pretty much went to 0%. LAVE, one of our agencies that we used to invest our cash, was at 1.2% in June 2020. And just to give you some additional context, back in June 2019, it was sitting at 2.4%. So quite a bit of a decrease there. As the city overall experienced decrease in revenues, we did see also an offset on expenditure side as well. We did see some salary savings, of course, and also contract and consulting services as mandatory shelter in place to confect. And many of the contracts and consultants could not work at that period as well. As I mentioned, our fiscal year 1920 is basically closed, and our numbers in the report are final. On the revenue side, we did project revenues to end at $28.7 million. And we actually brought in $28.6 million, so a little less than 1% of what was estimated. Also, on the expenditure side, we estimated $23.31 million. And the actuals were $23.35 million, slightly higher, but yet still less than 1%. And I want to emphasize that this is very important, being that getting the revenue and expenditures estimates correct or right were crucial to establishing our current fiscal year, our 2021 adopted budget. As revenue and expenditures came in line with what staff had estimated, there are no fiscal concerns to report to the city council tonight regards to us closing our fiscal year 1920. Our fund balance, even though it's unaudited, being that we are still in the process of analyzing our audit, ended at $15.7 million, maintaining our 40% reserve balance for our fiscal policy, and also basically coming in at 53% of our overall reserve balance. Our fund balance also came in at $17.9 million by the end of June 2020. Just have two more slides here. Just had various table with information, but just wanted to hone in on a few revenue highlights. We categorize our revenues, and non-departmental is where we book all our taxes, our property tax, sales tax, business license tax, et cetera. And we projected that to be at $25.6 million, and we ended the year at $25.4 million, pretty much in line with what we expected. The planning and building department, even though we projected a million, they came in a little bit higher, so that was a good sign. Recreation, as I mentioned, because it came to a sandhill, we estimated about $754,000, and they closed the year at $651,000, or $651,000. Overall, $28.7 million was what we projected, and we brought in $28.6 million. So in line with what was expected. On the expenditure, on the expenditure side, even though you do see some reds up there, red is a good thing, meaning what we projected, the actuals came in less than what we projected or we estimated. So just wanted to highlight a few here. Recreation, we estimated that we were going to spend $1.29 million, and we actually spent $1.28 million, so a little less than what we anticipated. Library spent also $1.374 million, and we ended at $1.38, so slightly above, but pretty much in line. Parts of Public Works came in slightly less than what we anticipated. And lastly, public safety, overall, the police department came in a little less, but fire came in a little bit more than what we anticipated as. There were some overtime due to some IODs fiscal year end. That really concludes my section of my presentation. The next time, I'll be presenting the July through September quarter report next month in the November council meeting. And I'll bring it, I'll turn it over to Annie for her cash investment section.
In the meantime, I just wanted to thank you, Director Chung. We'll go, we'll have comments at the end, but good estimating. Very impressive, so thank you for explaining that as well to the public, our residents. Hello, Mayor, Vice Mayor, councilmembers. Good to see you. I just got my computer to work, so it took me a while. Anyway, the, this slide right here is a new slide we inserted last quarter end. And this represents the year-over-year, 2019 versus 2020 total cash and investments. And as of year-end 2020, we have total of $38,476,000 versus year-end 2019, it was $36 million, so about $2.5 million over. And the next slide, this one right here. And this is a great comparison between one-year treasury, five-year treasury, LAVE, and RCD yield. And just by looking at the graph. One second. All right. The blue line represents one-year treasury. And as of the end of June, one-year treasury is at 0.16%. And the next one is purple. Purple is our five-year treasury. As of the end of June, it was at 0.29%. LAVE, Local Agency Investment Fund, it is at 1.217%. And RCD yield as of the end of June, we're looking at 1.36%, which is above all the other three. And we're doing pretty well. And the next slide, oh, sorry. Let me just go back to our investment portfolio real quick. As of the end of August, August 30th, we have total of $31,827,000. All to the, $31,827,000 in our total cash and investments, out of which we have about $8.3 million in our bank accounts, which is about 27%. And we have about $18.2 million with LAVE, which is about 58%. And we have CDs and agency bonds in our safekeeping account, about $4.5 million, and it's about 15%. The total yield for our money in the bank accounts is at 1.03%. LAVE is yielding 0.784%. And CDs and agency bond, we're looking at 1.75% to 1.79%. Since we have about 58% of our funds in LAVE, I'm going to be spending a few minutes talking about what LAVE is and what sort of investments that it's invested in. The state of California offers an account called PMIA. It's the Pool Money Investment Account. Through the PMIA, the state treasurer invests taxpayers' money to manage the state's cash flow and strengthen the financial security of local governmental entities. And within PMIA, there are three primary source of funds. The first one is the state agent, sorry. The first one is State General Fund, which is about 20%. And the second one is special fund held by state agencies. And the third one is money deposited by cities, counties, local agency, and this is the LAIF, LAVE portion, which is about 28%. As of August 31st of 2020, total deposit with PMIA is about $114 billion. And within PMIA, LAVE represents $32 billion. PMIA focuses on short-term investment pool with emphasis on government securities and highly-rated capital market instruments. Due to our current economic situation, between August of 2019 and August 2020, total PMIA deposits has increased $19 billion, and LAVE deposit has increased by about $8 billion. And there are six different categories invested in PMIA. Number one, treasuries, very stable treasury deposit, about 55%. Agencies, CDs and bond, time deposits, commercial papers, and with a little portion, less than 1% in loans. And they are not investing in corporate bond, in PMIA, and LAVE. However, to enhance yield, PMIA added commercial papers in their portfolio. But they are good rating commercial papers. For example, some of the holdings they have, UPS, Merck, Amazon, Toyota, Apple, JP Morgan. There are 475 cities invested in LAVE. And PMIA has been achieving the portfolio's safety by diversity. So remember our investment objectives. There is safety. There is the liquidity. And there is the yield. So we are achieving the safety by diversity. And for liquidity, they are investing in short-term marketable securities and treasuries to cover unforeseen withdrawals. And for yield, they are doing investments in different asset class, which is very high-quality rating asset class. So for our 58% invest in LAVE, and it's in a secure agency, and we, in this environment, in this market environment, and that should be a safe place with really good return. And the next slide, I'm going to briefly talk about Fed Funds Rate. As you know, Fed Fund Rate is the interest rate of which banks and other depository institutions lend money back and forth on an overnight basis. The law requires banks to keep a certain percentage of their customer money on reserve, where the bank can earn no interest whatsoever on the reserve. The Fed Fund Rate has dropped dramatically since the pandemic in March. So when Fed Fund Rates drop, that frees up the money, increase the supply of available money, so it's cheap to borrow, but at the same time, short-term rate will drop and will increase our inflation. The, this rate, this, this slide right here gives you the rates of our Fed Funds since July of 1954 up until October of 2020. As you can tell, we're going through lots of ups and downs and peaks and valleys. Pretty much, we started in July of 1954 at 0.25%. Sixty-six years later, October of 2020, we're about the same place. But through the peaks and valleys, in 1981, the peak, Fed Fund Rate is at 19.99, almost 20%. And I remember that's the year my family immigrated to the U.S. And my dad was telling my mom, "Boy, it's expensive to live in this country." Mortgage rate is 18%. And slowly, we get into a recession period. And the second peak was 1989. And the second peak was 1989. In March of 1989, Fed Fund was at 9.88%. But we went through SNL crisis, which is the savings and loan crisis. After three years, Fed Fund dropped to 2.66%. But market correct itself, came back up. In 2001, actually in October 2000, Fed Fund rate was at 6.51%. Unfortunately, there was 9/11 that happened, and Fed Fund rate dropped to 1%. But market came back up. In 2008, in January, Fed Fund was at 5.25%. But we went through the subprime mortgage crisis. Rate dropped to 0.08%. Then a few years later, here we are, COVID-19. Fed Fund dropped down to 0.09% again. So during all this, and then here is a snapshot of Fed Fund rate between 2015 and 2020. It went up, 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 and it came down sharply. And during this five years, this is the time where most of our positions, investment positions in our safekeeping account were purchased. And we had purchased quite a few really good return CDs and agency bonds. But now, since rate dropped down to almost nothing, so hopefully, we anticipate rate will go one direction, which will go up. And during this time period, and especially when there is election coming up, and we don't know when COVID-19 pandemic is going to be over, to lock money away in long-term, five years per investor policy, we might lose the opportunity to participate in upside interest rate hike. So for now, we have a lot of our money in short-term with LAVE and also with our, within our money market account. And it's a bank money market account. It's a negotiated rate at 10 basis point over LAVE. And we're achieving the rate at 1.03%, which is quite well. During the pandemic, we noticed the, there quite a bit of fraudulent activities in digital environment. There is, you just name it. There are just quite a few fraudsters out there trying to get into your email, trying to send you phishing email, trying to send you fraudulent invoices. So our staff, our finance staff, is taking online courses to increase awareness of actions to prevent fraud and also to enhance cybersecurity. Achieving yield is important, but at the same time, as we're the gatekeepers in the finance department, so we have to be sure that we're going to take a step back, be careful, very, very. We have to pay attention to what we're getting. Once money leaves the bank, and that, that's going to be hard to trace back. And also, I just want to take the opportunity, as Paul mentioned, that we have done quite a great work for our audit. So I want to thank all, Mark, our finance department, and everyone, all of you, for completing this awesome audit. We can't do this without all of you. And this concludes my presentation.
Thank you very much, Treasure Han. And we greatly appreciate your educating us and also your investment advice. I'm going to open it up to see if we have any questions or comments from the public on this item.
I have not received any emails for this item. And I do not see anybody requesting to speak on Zoom.
Thank you very much. And no public comment cards for anyone here?
No, not for this item.
Thank you. All right, then I will bring this back to council and see if we have any questions or comments. Councilmember Jacobowski.
I just have one quick one. On the expenditure, since this takes us through June 30th, the end of the fiscal year, with fire being a little bit over, that was before any of the deployments? Or did that include some of the early ones?
That was before the deployment.
Before all, thank you.
Councilmember Wong. Thank you. Councilmember Tal.
Yes, just one. First of all, I'd like to thank you both for your report and the hard work you continue to do. And the report was very comprehensive from both of you, and I appreciate it. One question is for Director Chung. Have we received any reimbursement from either the federal or state government that is reflected in what you just presented?
Regards to COVID-19, we have. So the state has given us through the CARES Act, appropriated $161,000. And what the state did was they apportioned it into six payments. We received two of the payments that was reflected in 1920 fiscal year.
So it's reflected in this report?
Yes.
Okay.
Was that a long-winded answer to, yes?
No, I was just, when I was studying and I was looking for it, and I couldn't find it, but I trust you that it's there. Thank you.
Yeah, we recorded under our COVID account to reflect the revenue. But it's not in the presentation because it's part of all the revenues that we've booked for 1920.
Okay, thank you.
Vice Mayor Yudi.
Yeah, Director Chung, what was the net financial impact year-to-date of COVID?
I don't have that to the top of my head. I would have to get back to you on.
You had several lines in your staff report. I think the net-net is about $150,000 negative.
Yes, but also at the same time, the council did appropriate funding for the COVID expenses, so we did have budget for it.
I was just wondering, I would think the city would be interested in what the net impact is because some revenue was down, but a lot of expenses were down as well. So I think the net-net is about $150,000 or so.
It's close to $150,000. If you're looking at as of June, I was thinking in as of June 2020, but it's also reflected in the COVID report to the council as well, all the expenditures. But as of now, we're close to, I believe, $160,000.
Okay, good, thank you. And then Paul and to Mark, congratulations on two years of clean audit. It's outstanding.
Thank you.
I also wanted to say thank you again. And thank you to Treasure Han for your updates and your work in putting us in a as-good-as-could-be-expected position for the cash and investments that we do have. And Director Chung, I appreciate you monitoring all of these and keeping track and breaking out, actually with the explanation that you included in the staff report of all the detail. That's very helpful to us. And if the public is interested, you actually go through a lot of those items with explanatory paragraphs. And I think that's really helpful and excellent to see and understand how the year ended last year and where we saw the changes compared to our estimates. So thank you very much for that and the extra work that it took to put all that together. Do we have a motion to receive and file the financial reports?
Sure.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, it passes unanimously. Again, thank you both. And it was your staff for the excellent audit results. Appreciate it. Next, we will be moving to the public hearing on item number 14. That's the appeal of design review numbers DRC 19-27 HP and DRC 19-28, 2275 Oak Knoll Avenue. Can we have a presentation from Director Savantes?
Thank you, Mary, council members of the audience. The project at 2275 South Oak Knoll Avenue is before the city council tonight as an appeal of a decision of the planning commission action. The project consists of a new two-story house and a new garage. The lot size for the property is 27,500 square feet and is currently developed with a single-family home that is 2,988 square feet, including a garage. The proposal is to demolish the existing house and garage and to construct a new 5,950-square-foot home and a 663-square-foot three-car garage. This project was presented to the planning commission on January 22nd and on March 25th of 2020. At the January meeting, the planning commission expressed concerns about the overall massing and lack of compatibility of a home. At the March meeting, the planning commission narrowly approved the project on a 3 to 2 vote. Subsequent to the approval of the project, a timely appeal was submitted to the city on behalf of the Samirino heritage. The appellant expressed concerns about the integrity of the historic assessment performed by Sapplos Environmental. It is well documented in the staff report and the historic assessment in the file that the property does not qualify as a historic resource as the site and architect failed to satisfy the requirements, the required criteria, under national, state, and local requirements. The focus of the project should be limited towards the legal findings or design review. A majority of the planning commission agreed with staff that the project satisfied these findings. And as a result, the planning commission approved the project. Due to this decision of the planning commission and the information provided within the public record and the administrative record, which includes the historic assessment, staff recommends the city council affirm the decision of the planning commission. If this decision is final pursuant to the council direction tonight or approval tonight, the project is final and allowed to move forward through the permitting process. So at this point, that concludes the presentation. An elf for questions.
Thank you very much. First, we'll have questions from council. Councilmember Wong.
So do we have any updated historical studies regarding this house?
I would, there is a supplemental report that's provided by the applicant. I'll have the applicant address that question.
Councilmember Tal.
Thank you. In the consideration of the actual design, there are raised quite a few issues with it being almost identical to the one across the street. That's of a bit of concern of mine, but is there any protection that homeowner has when someone comes and builds an identical house across the street?
There are no legal issues with someone sort of mimicking or copying a design that's in a neighborhood. In fact, the design review guidelines sort of lead you in a direction of being consistent with the theme of the neighborhood. But in addition to that, it does allow for creativity in your design. So if you're going to mimic an architectural style such as a neoclassical design, you have the ability, due to our design guidelines, to tweak it somehow. So that way, it shows some creativity. But from a legal perspective, there is nothing wrong with sort of taking a design that's in your neighborhood and copying that.
Unless it was trademark or copyright or something.
That's correct.
The other question is, in how much discussion, and I didn't go back and listen to the tape, but how much discussion was had at the planning commission level regarding where the massing is on this house? Because as I drive by that house, it just seems to be right on top of me at the street level. And it's not like there are others that may be as close, it's hard to determine, but at least that is broken up. This one is just going to be a big slab up front. And was there a discussion like that at the planning commission?
There was. In fact, there was a small discussion about the location and placement of this home with respect to the front setback that was being designed for this property. The answer to that question by the applicant was that it satisfied the required setbacks. Now, it's a great point that you made, councilmember, because the existing house has some offsetting and undulation to the design where it softens the appearance of the structure, whereas this is a two-story volume right in front. But to answer your question specifically, it was discussed, it wasn't issued, it was brought up, but it was a very brief discussion.
Well, isn't that compatibility? If other houses are either set for the back or on that street, which has some lovely houses at the top of Lockner to Monterey, where they're either set back or there's some breakup, so it just doesn't feel like it's... That's a compatibility issue that can be addressed. And the fact that it meets the setback is, while material, not necessarily guiding.
Yeah, the meaning of the development standards is just one checkbox. The second checkbox, of course, is compatibility. You can certainly make the argument that the lack of offsetting or the lack of softening effect to the project could be an issue with meeting the findings. And that could be addressed.
And the planning commission didn't necessarily address it other than to note in response that it met the setback.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Jacobowski, do you have any questions?
I don't have any questions at this time. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Yudi.
I think this is tall, just asking. I was concerned about the massing of the house, and to go from about 3,000 to 6,000 square feet. And the design is just really right in your face. So the question is, does it meet all the setbacks and all the requirements?
This project does satisfy all the development standards, which are setbacks, height requirements, maximum allowance, although it's a few square feet before hitting that max, but it does satisfy the code.
Great, thank you.
I had some similar concerns. And a question for me is, the maximum allowable for that lot is stated in the reports, both to staff and in the final. And I believe they're building within 10 feet of the allowed maximum, which is 3,600 feet more than there is now. Plus, there's the style, which I think Councilmember Tal brought up of the massing. But I'm trying to figure out, is it possible to even build such a large structure so close and not go over? I think that is there, 10 feet is such a small amount, given that this project is almost 6,000 square feet of build. And then anything more than 10 feet, on the 11 feet, they'd actually be over. And when you think of a one-inch slight line that's taken from the street or inappropriately in an angle, the whole house then goes up well past. What is the maximum allowable space because of their plans or building within 10 feet? So what are the courses of action that the city can take, given that this is so large? If there is an area, what checks are there for the residents in that, or for all of us, the community, for this not to go over? Because we clearly have such a large structure. And even if we consider it today, what we're going to do about that, I am concerned that even building this in the final, there's going to be problems down the road.
There is a certain reliance on the contractor in building the structure. That being said, there are the checks and balances in terms of the building inspection that take place to check setbacks, they check the foundation in terms of its location to property lines. These types of projects require a survey of the property as well as what we call a stringing of the property lines, which is essentially a string that identifies a property line that allows for a building inspector to take measure the location of the structure versus that property line. What we have been in the past with similar types of projects where they're coming awfully close to the maximum is we require verification by engineers or certified verifications in terms of verifying that setbacks are satisfied via the survey as a reference point. Also, that high verifications are also submitted. Also, that high verifications are also submitted during framing of the project rather than at the final inspection. We can also address the closeness to the maximum via another type of certification, which is square footage certification. Going back to what I initially said of the reliance to contractor, in this city, we have a provision where square footage is dependent upon a measurement from exterior wall to exterior wall, not interior wall to interior walls. So square footage is not your interior spaces. It's the entire massing of the structure. And so if a contractor is not familiar with those requirements, they could certainly look to adding layers and layers on the structure where it could result in exceeding the maximum. 10 square feet, all you need to do is add inches to the exterior and you're likely over the maximum.
And the other concern that I had, or two other areas, was the setback, and I understand that you are aware that they are complying, but I was interested to know, because, for example, across the street, there is the house that has a similar design, but it seems to be set back farther. And also, is there any survey that's done during the process or required to be done to show the compatibility for setback? I know there are legal stated rules that they comply with, but do you actually, in the course of making decisions or recommending a property for a project for approval, are there any neighborhood surveys of the setbacks in that immediate neighborhood, the legal neighborhood that you notice is provided to the ones that actually are across the street, to have the same feeling at that part of the block?
That's actually a great suggestion, that we don't do that at this moment in terms of surveying of the property's setbacks. It is, there's a reliance on the Design Review Committee and Planning Commission on their inspections to sort of, from a visual perspective, not from a survey perspective, to indicate or find whether this proposed house is consistent with the setbacks of the other homes. Just because this property satisfies the front setback doesn't necessarily mean you check the box and say, well, we can move on from that. Because part of the compatibility findings is ensuring that even the placement of this home is also compatible to legal neighborhood. And if the DRC or Planning Commission find that even though you satisfied the setback, that the location of the home is not consistent or compatible with the placement of other homes in the area, you can make the finding of non-compatibility.
All right, and we don't have that information, though, before us, because it wasn't done in this regard.
Correct.
Because that is a concern, obviously. I had the same thing when I got out of the car and looked at it and went across the street and looked at it. I was, even with the outline or the poles in place, struck by it's much, seems to be much closer than the ones in the, just as I turned my head, which would be the legal neighborhood. I didn't know if that was included in the situation packet. Thank you.
At this time, we need to open this up to public comment, unless anybody else on council has another question. But seeing none, we'll open it up to public comment at this time. First, does the applicant wish to speak?
Mayor, 10 minutes?
Sorry, Mayor! I was like, wait, where'd that come from?
10 minutes, right.
For all of the applicant's representatives together. Thank you.
Thank you, members of the council. Thank you, staff. Richard McDonald on behalf of the applicant and project team. I have with me Carrie Justine of Sapplos Environmental, who prepares the historical reports. We also have online on Zoom, the architectural team, Adele Chang, who can explain how the project is compatible with the neighborhood, but not necessarily identical, as some of the neighbors are concerned. I just want to make a couple of quick points. The first is that this appeal was originally scheduled for September 9th, and I, at that time, expressed the concern that a continuance would lead to a much more elongated process. And to the extent that we go down the road to deal with design issues, I would ask that you deal with them tonight, that you give Adele as much time as she needs to be able to answer all of your questions and to explain them accordingly, so that we can make a decision tonight. Secondly, with regard to the historical issues raised in the appeal, which was the only basis for appeal, there was no appeal of any of the design or compatibility findings. Staff correctly notes in its report that the appeal took issue not only with our environment, our historical resources report, but with the city's own historical reports prepared by ARG. We point out, Sapplos points out in the supplemental memorandum that I filed, how the information in the appeal is not supported by any evidence, unlike the city's own independent expert ARG and the Sapplos report. Hopefully, your questions with regard to the design issues mean that the historical issue is not really at issue anymore, which then takes us to the design issues and it takes us to the emails that I received this afternoon for some neighbors who were concerned about the massing design and scale of the home. My first sort of reaction is, I guess you get in trouble whether you're not compatible, and I guess you get in trouble if you are compatible. Either way, you seem to get in trouble. But Adele will explain why it's not identical and it is compatible, and the Planning Commission did spend quite a bit of time on compatibility and did make the findings of compatibility. And compatibility is with the entirety of the neighborhood, not just whoever happens to be adjacent or proximate. And I think the other issue is that we now are in October, and we started in January. And as I say, no one appealed on the basis of compatibility. Nobody even showed up in January or March. This is like out of left field, the first we're hearing of it. So I would ask you to take that into consideration. These are good people who've spent quite a bit of time working with staff, working with the Planning Commission to get a good project, and it would be nice to be able to move it forward. With that, let me turn it over to, unless you have any questions for the historic resources consultant, let me turn it over to Adele, who's available on Zoom to be able to answer in detail sort of the questions you just were raising.
And just as a heads up, you have, or she has, seven minutes left.
Well, if she needs more, she can hopefully be given it.
Good evening, City Council members. My name is Adele Chang, and I'm with LCRA in Pasadena, architect for this project. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, let me share screen. Will the host allow me to share screen?
Yes, one moment, let me change that for you.
Can you deduct the time from the seven minutes?
I have paused the timer, but please note you only have six minutes and 30 seconds
I'm still not able to share screen.
Can you try it now?
Still no.
I know you have two entries on Zoom here.
Please allow both to share them.
Okay, can you try it now, please?
Yes. Thank you, Hannah. First, I'd like to provide a kind of a Google view, satellite view of our environment. This is our site along Oak Knoll. As you can see, this is a neighborhood of many very deep lots, as evidenced by the many tennis courts in the area. There are also many large houses, especially on the west side of Oak Knoll. I know for, I know that the one that is under construction is over 7,000 square feet, and that there's another one further up, that's 9,000 square feet. Those are only the ones I know about. I don't know about many of the others, but they appear to have very large footprints. The east side of the street has mostly open front yard with houses visible from the street, while the west side of the street mostly has tall hedges in the front, blocking direct view from the street. And I want to also point out that the existing house also has a pool and a tennis court. And here is kind of a quick drop-in of our house and the property. Here's the house right next door to us. The main mass of the house is here. The main mass of our house is in this line with the porch in front. The house to the north of us is very irregular, but it is also a much wider and deeper, and the property line kind of angles over because of the way the wash happens in that area. We began our project two years ago, and our client at that time told us that they would like a house in the neoclassical style. This was before the house across the street even began construction. And from the design guidelines, you can see that this is a very formal style. It is intended to be very flat across, very traditional. It has some very clear type of design elements, and it is a formal symmetrical style. And this is a style that really is found throughout San Marino. I have some examples. 1945 Lombardi Street, which is on the north side, and diagonally across the street from it is 1910 Lombardi on the south side. They are in very close proximity to each other. And also on Carlton Street further south, on the same side of the street, just one house apart, 1530 Carlton, which is on the corner of Carlton and Monterey, also in this style, and 1520 Carlton, one house apart, also on the same side of the street, in this neoclassical style. And this is what our house looks like in this style. It's very symmetrical, as required by this style, and it is formal. But I'd like to point out that we are actually very different from the house across the street. The house across the street has precast concrete Corinthian columns, pediment, and trim. It has a much narrower cortical proportion, a full arch front entry, a shallow roof pitch, and it is a fully exposed house with an open fence in the front, whereas ours has a painted brick facade. So the whole house will appear much more white, like those houses on Carlton. It is a, it has a traditional painted wood doric columns, pediment and trim. It has a much wider cortical proportion and a more traditional front entry treatment with a red door. And we have a steeper roof pitch, which is more typical of this style. We have Juliet's balconies on the second floor. We have perfect symmetry with lower roof forms on either side, whereas the other house has one side that has some other elements popping out behind the front mass. And last but not least, we have an existing tall hedge in the front of the property, which shall remain. And I believe that we will not be as exposed and visible as the house across the street. And I want to add again that having similar styles on the same street near each other, there is a precedent for that in San Marino historically, and I'm sure I can find other streets. I don't know why this is, but it just so happens that such a thing does exist in the city. I want to point out something about setbacks. The required front yard setback is 50 feet. And actually, between the first and the second planning commission hearing, we moved it further back to 60 feet. So we are actually completely in line with the adjacent house, but the 60 feet is only to our front court. The main mass of the house is eight foot six further behind that. So this is the house. I want to point out that because our main house with its livable area, it's very compacted in the middle of the lot, and there are two non-livable open masses that are only one story tall on either side. This creates a setback to the main mass of well over 35 feet on both sides. So that actually allows for a greater amount of privacy to the adjacent neighbor. You can see the adjacent neighbor very close, whereas we're very far from our side setbacks with the main part of the house. It's trellises on either side. One is a porch, one is something you drive under to get to the garages in the rear. Again, our setback actually exceeds what is required. So this is the plan. Again, it shows what's happening on either side. It's a very compact plan, and they are open trellises, and here's the roof, everything very symmetrical, as is required by the style. Not all styles are required to be this symmetrical, but this particular one would be very odd if it wasn't. And it is, it is specified also in your design guidelines. And you can see how the house, it's really very compact with these lower forms on either side. Here's the front, and here's the rear. Again, we're adhering to that symmetry that's needed for the style in both the front and the back.
Ms. Chang, the buzzer has gone off. If you can conclude your remarks.
Okay, I'll be quick. I think none of these others are that critical. We do have a landscape plan, the landscape plan, and planting plan, and arborist reports were all fully vetted by the planning commission. And in conclusion, I'd like to ask that you support the decision of your planning commission. I want to add also, other changes were made between the first and second planning commission hearing. The whole house was lowered by two feet by reducing the floor-to-floor heights, and so our setbacks and heights are definitely well, well, height is under and setbacks are well in excess of the requirements.
Thank you very much.
Would you like to hear anything from our historic resource consultant?
We don't have any questions here. Do I see any questions not from council? Thank you very much. All right, so I would like to open the public hearing. No, I already did that, sorry.
Thank you very much, Mayor Gretchen and council. I'm Shirley Jangles, 1404 Wilson Avenue. I'm not as good a speaker as Mr. McDonald, so I think it's good for me to sit. So thank you very much. I don't know if I'm going to have 10 minutes like there. Okay. I represent San Marino Heritage and all of our potential historic resources, namely the 1954 home at this time at 2275 Oak Knoll by Culver Heaton AIA. In your report, your staff report on page two, it says that, quote, "The architecture is identified as ranch style and is not a strong example of Culver Heaton's expertise as a master architect. Additionally, he is not listed in the city of San Marino's list of locally significant architects." I just want to point out that I think that any architect who is recognized by the AIA should be automatically included in this list. I want to turn your attention to page 126 of your agenda packet, 126 and 127, because I want to tell you that I think it's unfair to the community when applicants provide information to the legal community that are illegible. And I spoke with Aldo about this before the meeting, and apparently, the planning building department assumes that applicants show legible copies of plans to the neighbors, but there is no legal requirement, and I really think that that's unfair. Now, the applicant can hire lawyers and representatives and consultants, but the process here is fundamentally flawed for that reason and a few others. But the process here is fundamentally flawed for that reason and a few others. No one has the right to tell others what to do with their property. But we all have to play by the same rules. And I want to thank the staff, the council and the concerned citizens for engaging on this important topic. I'm going to give you, I believe, reasons to deny the applicant and suggested conditions of approval to protect the interests of the city and the community. We do believe that this property qualifies as a contributor to a potential historic district in that our city founding chartering documents are very unique. And this whole city could be considered a potential historic resource. And with regard to density with this project, I believe that we really should consider an environmental review of the impacts that this project would have on the community. Now, I'm looking at the planning commission hearing calculation of planning and design review fees dated March 1. I just want to point out something that seems a little odd to me on number 4B. "The provisions or restrictions of the code which prompts the need for this application is a new semi-enclosed unconditioned bathroom at detached garage at the accessory structure." I don't know what a semi-enclosed bathroom is, but it kind of raises a red flag for me. "We received a bundle of comments this afternoon at 1:26 PM in advance of the 6 PM meeting. And some of them are over a month old." The letter from Mr. McDonald, attorney for the applicant, is dated from early September. We would have not received that in prompt manner or timely fashion. And I do not think it's reasonable to expect us to address everything in this letter in 72 hours and also digest the comments from these important neighbors in less than four hours. Because of these inconsistencies, omissions and potential violations of notice requirements, I would wish that you would request, suggest a continuance. But at any rate, I think it is important to make sure that the neighbors are given legible plans review in order to make a determination as to whether or not they can approve them. "的要求 that Aldo might mention are not reassuring." Most residents, from my understanding and my communications, have little faith in the planning and building department for a few good reasons. As you may or may not know, an applicant for new construction was allowed to put a solid concrete parking lot in the drip line of a native oak in the rear of 2461 Mission Street. And this property on South Oak Knoll has an oak tree, which is owned by the city. And it's in the front and it has a big canopy. And I think the city has a duty to protect that tree. And we are very concerned. You have a letter on October 12th from Shawn Michael Costa, who gave his conditional approval on May 24th of 2019, quote-unquote, "provided no oak trees are removed." Well, it may not be removed, technically speaking, during a project. But we know that these oak trees are sensitive and we do lose them because of this new construction and impervious concrete driveways and things like that. "The character, quality and desirability of the neighborhood is quickly being eroded." That was from Lanyang, received on September 9. I received it today, October 14. This person says that "they never received any notices from the owners regarding any building plans prior to this time, prior to this letter." The notes from Aldo state that the applicant reached out to these people on May 24th of 19 and May 28th of 19. However, there are no times noted, there are no notes or details or any idea that these neighbors were left any messages or... And I just think it's something that we really need to fix. So these are among my strong concerns. My last point, and I think this is the most important one. On a different project, our preservation nonprofit was required a bond during legal proceedings. Mr. McDonald wanted our charity to be burdened with a $100,000 bond to protect their interests. Our residential communities are being turned into commercial districts, and it's unfair. Now, I'm here as a volunteer. And he imposed, he tried to impose a $100,000 bond against our charity. The judge said 10,000. And we raised some money and we paid it. Because you city people, you city council and the city, you've got a lot of power. But you have to protect the interests of the community, not just the applicants and whether or not they always have the right to sell their property. We have these vacant houses and they're a problem. So I suggest that if you are going to approve this project, that you require the applicant to post a $250,000 bond. So that if they don't comply or if they don't finish the job, that you have the authority and the power to impose sanctions. And you're already in a position of control. Because that's the only way to make it fair to the community. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ladies and Ms. Jangles. Now we have open comment. And I know that we have people here. So we'll start with the public that's in the room who've been waiting. And I thank you for your patience as we went through all of this. And if we can proceed with comment cards. I believe Acting City Clerk Merleau has some from the audience. And if you have not turned in your comment card, please do so at this time. They're on the front table and you can complete them and she will call you. And then we'll go to those that are on Zoom or have emailed.
Thank you, Mayor. The first one I have that was submitted via email was a request to speak from Louis Kasi.
May I just confirm, three minutes? Yes, please. Would everybody please respect the time and a three-minute time limit for each person speaking? Thank you.
My name is Louis Kasi, 3059 Monterey Road. I'm here to oppose 2275 South Oak Knoll Deanier, identical to 2258, which is directly across the street from one another. I know that San Marino prefers neighborhood compatibility when building new houses. But we are not a new developing community in Benjamin Hookamanga or Eastfield. And being near identical in design size and proportion right across the street from each other is not how San Marino would normally interpret neighborhood compatibility. From speaking with the homeowner of 2258, Diana and Nixon, I learned that they do not at all mind to have a new house that's bigger, better and prettier rising across the street, but just not near identical, which take away the uniqueness of San Marino. And I would also like to provide a precedent of how this community is not liking near identical near each other. I believe the case is in 2015 on Lorain Road. There's one on 2151 and 270. And I believe at that time, the community also came out and speak in opposition of being near identical. And that's an example of how this community is not liking near identical too close to each other. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kasi.
The next request to speak is from Nixon and Diana Han.
大家晚上好。我的名字叫Diana Han。我是圣马力诺2258 South Oak Knoll Avenue的雇主。
Believe me, everyone, today I'm Sylvia Call, I'm the translator for Diana Han. Believe me, everyone, my name is Diana Han. And I am the homeowner of 2258 South Oak Knoll Avenue in San Marino. Thank you for taking the time for my appearance today.
让我和我的丈夫Nixon毫不犹豫地选择在2011年购买圣马力诺2258 Oak Knoll的房产。
In 2010, our family immigrated to the United States. And we chose to live in San Marino because of its excellent schools and unique and beautiful neighborhoods. In 2011, we purchased the Oak Knoll house. And we were so enamored of San Marino that in 2014, we purchased a home on Winston for my sister.
和我们一起合作设计2258 South Oak Knoll的梦想家园。我们几乎每周见面一次。
In August 2016, we were thrilled to obtain the surface of well-respected and experienced architect, Mr. John Barber, to work together to renovate and design our dream home. We met every week for nine months and successfully got approval from the design committee on our first attempt.
我们不敢相信自己的眼睛。
We had been building this home for the past two years, 2018 to 2020, and had just moved in in September 9. My husband and I, Mr. John Barber and our builder, Mr. Merso, worked very hard to get to this day where our dream home was finally complete. As we cheerfully move in, we noticed that our directly crossed street neighbor at 2275 Oak Knoll had posted a notice of building renovation with a picture. We could not believe our eyes to our shock and dismay. The home looked like just our house. Almost the same proportion, material, style, front entrance and columns, the number and style of windows, all the same. We beseech the city council and design committee to maintain the character of our beautiful street with a unique and original home. Our unique John Barber home design was copied, plain and simple.
很遗憾的是，我在最近一个星期内拜访我的South Oak Knoll邻居们。
Furthermore, many of my neighbors and ourselves never received any notice about this renovation or signed any agreement granting approval. Our neighbors also do not agree with the proposed renovation. I have brought a list of neighbors and their signatures that are in support. Yesterday, our architect, Mr. John Barber, also emailed a letter to the design community expressing his concerns about how similar the two homes are. If this directly cross street home is approved, San Marino's character of unique homes will be destroyed. Of course, two homes can be similar, but they must be much further away from each other. I believe every home has its own story and every family has their own unique dream home. Members of city council and design committee, please consider the unified voice of our Oak Knoll neighborhood in deciding what to do about the 2275 Oak Knoll renovation. Before the applicant was talking about, they, in January, marched, no one came here to appeal. It's all because the COVID-19 pandemic situation. No one wants to really go out. That's why nobody's here, here in January and March. So please put that in consideration. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I just have a quick question to follow up. We did get documents. Are these from you?
Yes, those are from Diana.
Are these from you, Diana? I'm sorry, the signatures that you described. Right, we got a set, it's okay. Yes, thank you, the original. Thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. So, for your helpful translation.
Next, I have a request from Elaine Lu.
My name is Elaine Lu. I'm a resident of San Marino. I have been living in San Gabriel Valley for 14 years. And after living in three different cities nearby, I decided to move to San Marino six years ago. I choose the city of San Marino not just because of its outstanding school, but also its unparalleled urban development and planning. Every time when I drive in the city, I very enjoy the beautiful houses with different styles on both sides of the street. And it's always a joy to see unique architecture in our city. I was in complete shock when my friend Diana Han showed me her neighbor's new house project at 2275 South Oak Knoll Avenue. It looks exactly like Diana's house. Two houses that look exactly the same across the street from each other would definitely destroy the uniqueness of our city. I'm proposing to make inquiries into the design proposal on the house on 2275 South Oak Knoll Avenue and request a different design be considered. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
The next request I have is from Lucy Wong.
Hi, I'm Lucy Wong and I'm at fifteen twenty-nine Charlton Road in San Marino. I'm here to oppose 2275 Oaknoll with the proposed design being almost identical to 2258 Oaknoll. 2275 Oaknoll is nearly identical to 2258. And before coming here tonight, I asked some of my office colleagues, looking at the picture of these two houses, do you think it looks identical? Twelve out of twelve of them affirmed it looked nearly identical. Now, I understand the compatibility nature, but also being a San Marino resident for over thirty-five years, I have enjoyed and applaud the city of San Marino for keeping its ground at the level of uniqueness of every property. When the house looks nearly identical, we are putting the beautiful street of Oaknoll into jeopardy, of looking generic, and is not the reason why I chose to enjoy living in the city of San Marino with its beautiful houses and unique architectural style. I urge that the city reconsider is looking how similar these two homes are and that it should change to hold its own character. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, I have Peter Sinclair.
Hi, I'm Peter Sinclair. I live at two seven five four Carleris Road, members of the Design Committee and City Council. I want to thank you for your time and your service and providing the opportunity for citizen input. I did submit a version of these comments, the email just before I spoke, but let me try and give them and make another few off-the-cuff comments, given some comments to me previously. I don't take the dynamics of citizen access for granted in our country and this community in particular. It's quite nice to see, so thank you. On a personal level, it's very nice to speak on behalf of the residents of 2258 Nixon and Diana. They are very active members of this community. Their daughter plays sports with mine. She is deadly behind the three-point line and also in the paint, and she has hit the ball several times on defense and softball. They have integrated themselves in this community and they're valued members. So I'm obviously here to request that you not approve the proposed design at 2275. There are countless beautiful designs that could have been chosen, worthy of San Marino, worthy of the owners. Unfortunately, this one was not the right one. I have no doubt, I actually spent some time today, I'm not familiar with this process. I read the design standards, I read some of the city code. And I don't know about things like mass and setbacks. Seems like this one probably was built, maybe it doesn't, I forgot to make the judgment. But I think it's very apparent to anyone with eyes that the design is very, very similar. In fact, it is identical. And in reading the language of the city charter, the charter of the Design Committee, and zoning code, the duty, not just the prerogative, the duty of the Design Committee is to foster new development that is aesthetically compatible with existing buildings and infrastructure. So a few points have been made before I got up here today. One, there were examples showing neoclassical designs that were either catty corner from each other or two apart. We have professionals scouring San Marino, and they can't find any directly across from each other or next to each other. I think that's quite telling. Secondly, it was asserted that there is no legal problem with identical designs in the same neighborhood. Say there's no prohibition does not say that the standards themselves aren't the legal basis on which this can be denied. In addition to the words compatible, which are used several times, the words harmonize and the words complement are used again and again. And the impact of a home in relation to its surroundings are asked to be considered. So let's just consider what those words mean. Complement, if you think about visual design, complementary colors are opposite colors. Things that are too close to each other in visual design don't match. Give me, please, ten seconds. The other is harmony, which is used again and again and again. Anyone who's a student of music, neuroscience, or physics knows that two notes close to each other are the opposite of harmonic. They are in fact discordant. And it's very clear that it is the duty of this Design Committee as we really consider to reject this on the basis it is too similar. Thank you.
Thank you.
The last speaker for my half is from Karen Hubby.
I am not here to say for or against. I am the block captain for Oaknoll. And I'm very concerned that we do not have discourse with our neighbors. Just to make, that being said, just make a comment that over a week and a half ago, an oak tree fell across the road. There was a car with a mother and four children that were coming up Oaknoll to go home. She, good thing she was paying attention to the road and not arguing with her children. As she heard a noise, saw some movement, put her foot on the brake, the tree fell right in front of her car within two inches. Had that tree fallen on her car, would have either killed her or injured her family for life. At that point, what does she care what color her house is? We all need to look at the importance of life of our families and our community and be thankful where we live and be thankful for our families. Thank you very much.
I know there's one additional audience member that would like to speak as well.
Mayor, council members, thank you. So I reside between Karen, who just spoke, and Diana and Nixon, who just built their home. And, you know, ideally, I would love to support my neighbors in their projects and the improvements of their homes or their new constructions or welcoming them into the community. I've been born and raised in this community, so I know it very well. Honestly, I feel both homes are beautiful homes, and I think they they complement the community. It certainly fit. But I can appreciate Diane's concerns. I think that if I was building a home or if I was looking at a home being created or built exactly like mine or very similar, and I think there's significant similarities between the two homes, I think I would have concerns about that as well. So I can certainly appreciate it. As a community member, again, I appreciate both sides. I think they're lovely homes, but I can I can understand how someone's dream home, it shouldn't be reflected back at them every day when they walk outside. So I would oppose 2275 in hopes and hope that the two can work together to come up with some variations in design, some reasonable ones that would satisfy them both. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. May I have your name, please?
What's that?
May I have your name, please?
I'm sorry, Shawn Acosta.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comment here tonight? I see one more person who was raised their hand. Since you didn't fill out a comment card, would you give your name and address?
Yes, my name's Connie Sandru. Is neighbor next to Diana, two two five eight South Oaknoll Avenue. We lived there over twenty-five years and and I saw the street, all the houses are very neat. And from two days ago, Diana saw the design and I feel the first eye that I see the design compared to Diana's house and is the triangle roof attracted my attention. They are very much similar to it. If there is, the architect will take the idea, change the idea of the roof style, and it would be a lot benefit to each other. They are not look too good on the aesthetic pleasing across to each other. And if they are going to change to the design of the roofing a little bit, and then would be a lot benefit to each other. So, thank you.
Thank you.
What was your address again? What was your address?
Your address?
Two two five eight.
Two two five.
I'm sorry, two two eight zero.
Two two eight zero.
South Oaknoll Avenue.
All right, so as, do we have any email comments?
We do have email comments. I'll go through, and then I also just wanted to note that the architect, Ms. Chang, is also requesting to speak after we finish the public comment period. But I will go forward with the emails. And and these are the ones, these are ones that were distributed to you in advance. And so for the record, I want to note we received them from the following people, and all of them cited the similarity of the proposed house to the house across the street as their objection. And those letters were from Vivian Wong, John Barber, Connie Sandru, Michelle Zhang, Shawn Acosta, Elaine Lu, Peter Sinclair, Lucy Wong, and Nixon and Diana Han. And we also received one letter objecting to the size of the home from Lan Yang. And then after, since this afternoon, I received two additional emails, one from Eddie Chang, and this email states, "I am the owner of the property at two two nine zero South Oaknoll Avenue in San Marino. We have lived here for about eight years. I am not able to make the special city council meeting tonight, but I do want to express my concern. We love living in San Marino, especially on this street, Oaknoll. There are lots of fabulous houses with their special character. There are currently many new builds on this street. The fact that 2275 Oaknoll and 2258 South Oaknoll are so close to each other and look very similar on their street elevations, this will decrease the overall appeal and feel of the local community. Sincerely, Edward and Chang." And then I also received an email, as Mr. Sinclair mentioned, which covered most of the statements that he said in person here. And except for Ms. Chang, I do not see anyone else requesting to speak on Zoom.
Thank you. Can you just go over the addresses again of the people? I know we've heard.
The addresses of them?
Yeah.
Sure. Vivian Wong is two three nine five Adair. Louis Cossey is two two seven five South Oaknoll. John Barber, John Barber has an address in Oregon, seventeen seventy-three Janus Way. Connie Sandru is two two eight zero South Oaknoll. Michelle Zhang is, actually, she did not note her address on her letter. Shawn Acosta is at two two four eight South Oaknoll. Elaine Lu, I'm sorry, I don't have, oh, I'm sorry, sixteen twenty Rubio Drive. Peter Sinclair, two seven five four Carleris. Lucy Wong, fifteen twenty-nine Charlton. Nixon and Diana Han are two two eight five South Oaknoll. Lan Yang is two two nine five Oaknoll. Karen Hubby, two two three zero Oaknoll. And I think that's it.
Thank you, Ms. Merso.
You you mentioned that Nixon's address is two two eighty-five, isn't it, two two five eight?
Yes.
I'm I'm sorry.
Make sure to subvert it that. And also Louis Cossey is not two two seven five, because that's the property.
I apologize.
No, no, that's fine.
Yeah, Nixon and Diana are two two eight five.
Five eight.
I'm sorry, it's incorrect in the letter.
Oh, is that a made, transpose the numbers? Thank you. All right, I just wanted to see how many of the residents that previously had no responses spoke tonight about the project, one way or the other, in the legal neighborhood. So I appreciate that. Thank you. I apologize. So I will bring the item back to council for discussion. Do I have any other questions that we have that this is triggered from council members, other than the one, yes? Vice Mayor Yudi?
I have a question for council. What is, what are we deciding tonight? Is it just on the appeal?
Yes, the four options are available. In other words, you can affirm the decision, set forth in the staff report, you can affirm the decision of the commission, you can remand the case back to the commission, you can conduct a de novo hearing.
Is it just around the appeal?
Yes.
Because of the historical significance?
Oh, you're also asking whether whether they can deal with the design issues.
Yeah, I'm wondering what we're being asked to decide tonight. Is it solely the historical significance, or is it other considerations of the project?
The the appeal, if you granted the appeal, or if you denied the appeal, that would be relating only to the historical nature. If you feel that the other concerns, the architectural concerns should be taken into account, that can either be done by remanding it back to the planning commission or by setting it for a de novo hearing before yourself.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Vice Mayor Yudi. Do we have any other questions that have come to mind? Thank you. Councilmember Jacobowski.
Thank you. This is Director Cervantes. Many times we see parcels with a statutory lot size that is greater than the parcel. Am I reading this correctly, that the actual lot is twenty seven five, but the statutory is twenty thousand?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other questions from other council members?
Yeah, I just have one, because you do raise it in your report, actually, it was by Ms. Edwards, but you mentioned here that Oaknoll Avenue between Hudson Drive and Monterey Road is characterized by having deep setbacks. What is meant by that?
If you go just, I would say maybe the the house to the north, and as you go further north to until you hit Monterey Road, those properties have large setbacks. So the distance between the property line and where the home begins, there's a large distance there. That's what I meant by deep setbacks.
That's, because you mentioned it's characterized by, and so I just wanted to get the knowledge correct. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Yudi?
Here are a question for Director Cervantes. In looking at page fourteen one forty-two, which shows the neighbors that either had no response or objected or approved, are you comfortable that the notifications did in fact happen on this project? Because some of the people that had no response were here tonight talking against it, so I'm wondering why in prior hearings no one showed up.
Well, I I think that one of the neighbors, I think, had a great point with the COVID crisis, of course, where there's reluctance to to go out into the community or at least to come to these types of meetings.
Were those meetings on Zoom, though?
The meetings were on Zoom, yes.
And then also tonight, other people sent in emails, objecting.
Right, and and so that's that's likely a result of the the public hearing notice for tonight's meeting, which included a a mailer as well as a posting in the newspaper. Of course, the mailer is a lot more effective because it goes to individual property owners. And we certify that those mailers are indeed all there. With respect to the the initial notification process, which is the map that you make reference to, that is a notification process that must occur prior to the item being placed on the agenda. It is a prerequisite of the applicant that they It is a prerequisite of the applicant that they walk the neighborhood and present them with the project to obtain, not only to provide a level of communication, but also to obtain some level of, of cooperation and transparency, I guess. When you have a condition where, like, like in this case, where four have signed the document and not objected to the project, and eight who are not responsive, that is not a comfortable position to, to be in from staff's perspective, because you deal with matters just like tonight, where there's clearly a disconnect between that, that sort of that neighborhood collaboration. And, but the code does not require that the applicant obtain everyone's signature. It just requires that show reasonable attempts to reach out to the neighborhood. And they did do that. So technically speaking, they satisfied the requirements. But of course, eight applicants who were, or eight neighbors who did not respond, it is certainly an issue, as you can see tonight.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm wondering if we shouldn't stiffen up the code in some way to, you know, make sure it's more than just walking around the neighborhood, but really a, a real effort to, you know, get the neighborhoods working together.
Can I also?
Did I just, oh, I'm sorry, I just have a follow up?
I did too.
Okay, go ahead.
Haven't asked a question yet, so to follow up on the notice, I believe it was, though, I sat in on the march meeting, and that was, if you can explain the circumstances, that was a difficult meeting in the sense it was run, that was the first time that our city was doing anything not in person. It was staged at the library, and there were quite, I know Director Cervantes was handling everything literally for that meeting, and it was quite an ordeal, if I recall correctly. And there were a number of problems also with the Zoom and participation. So I'm not sure that we can even say who tried to get in, didn't make it, didn't give their comments at that time. The march was really, only the parties were there, everybody had, and there was numerous problems. So I do want to bring that up for the sake of the residents that perhaps did try to appear at that meeting. It's been a long time since, I understand, but that was a very awkward meeting, the first one our city did under COVID.
And certainly, I didn't want to relive that meeting, of course. It was our first attempt at having a Zoom meeting under this crisis, and it did not go well at all. We had a combination of applicants physically present and those that were in Zoom, and the audio system just did not function at all. And so that, that was a very tough meeting for everyone. I would say probably a tough meeting for anyone who wanted to join that meeting, because it was the first time we had Zoom links, and that in itself is still a complication even as, as today. But yeah, that, that meeting certainly, in my opinion, probably should, would not count in terms of public outreach, so.
All right, thank you very much. I just want to clarify that. Councilmember Tal?
The, the shocking thing when it comes to notice is I'd be, I, I'm looking at this report and like to know where it is, the outreach that occurred to two two five eight, because I think had they been showing the plans, there would have been more. So is that, where is that in your report, where you talk about that they made some reasonable attempt?
Yep, so if, if you recall, council member, we had adjusted the code a year, years back, where we required the applicant to sign under penalty of perjury that they went around and showed the neighbors certain documentation. We have in the file, in that specific case, where the applicant did go to that property owner by identifying that it was under construction, so likely the property owner was not there. And so they did sign the documentation showing that they did reach out to the property, that they, they did go to the site, but of course, nobody was there because it was under construction.
And I wanted to follow up on that, too, because it struck me, I believe Mrs. Hahn spoke to, their house was under construction for two years. So do we have a mechanism in the code or something that staff would consult when there is, in a legal neighborhood, a property under long-term construction? Is there an extra step that they would mail plans or set up an appointment and make the homeowners of the home under construction aware? You know, because obviously, visiting a job site is not adequate notice to the homeowners.
There are really only two provisions to the prerequisite neighbor notification process, which is what we're discussing in the reference to the map in the staff report. There's, the code states that the applicant is to show reasonable attempts to reach out to neighbors, period. The second component, which was a recent amendment of the code, requires in addition to reaching out to neighbors, that you sign under penalty of perjury that you actually did that. That's, that's all that's required of the code. And so, so we as staff took it a step further and required that, that, because we drafted this form, we're required that they identify the dates that they attempted to reach out to the neighbors. So that's an additional step that we had imposed at the, but that's not codified. What's codified is the reasonable attempts and the penalty or perjury signature.
And is that, okay, just the last follow? But this is something I think I'm hearing from other council members, that we do need to bring forward and reconsider the notification for the benefit of everyone in the community. And this is a good example for that. So I would think that council is supporting something that, if you could look into this and, and try to figure out ways. Is that page, though, that says the date and times of even when, so we know whether it was during the construction period? Is it in the attachment? Or do you have the dates that they tried to reach?
The dates, they attempted, first attempt, May twenty-fourth, second attempt, May twenty-eight.
Of this, of?
Of last year.
Of last year? Well, no, twenty twenty.
According to the, what's signed here, it's two thousand nineteen.
Two thousand nineteen.
Last year.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, could I, I'm just augment one thing I said to the vice mayor's question. Because the affirmation of the planning commission's decision and the planning commission's findings about the design of a home, that the home design issue is before you in addition to the points that were raised in Ms. Jalen's appeal.
Thank you, I appreciate that. City Attorney Lynch. Do we have any other questions? Seeing none, then I'll proceed with comments from council. And I do not know who led this off in questions. So councilmember Tal, I believe you did on this item?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm, first of all, I reject the idea of the historic nature of the existing property. I, I believe that there's nothing material or substantive compelling to suggest either that the, the subject house, which by the way, I like, or that area of Oak Knoll is in any way historical, as evidenced by the development of the property right across the street. Wasn't very sad, wasn't very sad. So I reject that notion. However, I am concerned about several factors in this house, that now knowing the difficulty associated with the march meeting, and, and seeing that the, the, the people who are most boisterous about this tonight didn't attend that meeting. They weren't there, and there were no members of the public. Really, there was a project manager, there was some other people, didn't have an, didn't attend that meeting. I would prefer it, it going back to planning commission for a further, for a further hearing on the compatibility issue, given the setback of the house. And to the extent that anybody wants to raise the issue that the, the house design is identical from that across the street, that they're well, they're, they'd be able to, but I, I do think we should have a full hearing of the planning commission on this, given the, the circumstances. But, you know, if you're going to argue that this is historical, I, I think you're wrong and I would save the money.
Thank you very much, councilmember Tal. Councilmember Wong?
Well, I think Ms. Jalen did a very great job. I think it's a beautiful design. Unfortunately, there is already a new classical, you know, house across the street, and I think it's better that we send this back to the planning commission. Thank you.
Councilmember Jacobowski?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I am not finding the justification for the architect to be mentioned as of note with regard to this residential design. And I do not find that the property is of note. As far as the design being similar to that across the street, as we were informed earlier, it really hasn't been codified that we can't copy another design. And in fact, there's a, a section of town in East West Street, not far from City Hall, where there are four high homes that were built in the twenties, very similar appearance by one architect. And if that is something that the city would like to have the council look at further in the future, it's a matter that we can take up. I was texting our city attorney earlier to confirm that it was okay to speak from my perspective, and she confirmed that it was. I was on the planning commission, and I'm not positive, I may have been in the chair at the time, that the property across the street was brought before us. It was approved the night that it was presented, and it received great accolades for its design and presentation, and just everything about it felt perfect. Unfortunately, in seeing it built out, I, I don't believe that the, I believe it was CAD representation that we received, ended up being a full representation of what we see now. And to bring up the mayor's comment of this house being built out to within twenty square feet of the maximum allowable, I think a number of us are feeling gunshot. That isn't to say that it may or may not be approvable, but I think it really deserves a very careful going over. My initial thought was to suggest a de novo hearing, starting from scratch, but I certainly would be open to remanding it to the commission if we believe that the voices of those people here tonight might possibly give additional information to the commission that they haven't heard already, since we were told legally that it's sort of okay to copy, even though ethically, I mean aesthetically, many of us find that it's not necessarily what we're looking for. I could go either way. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Yudi?
Thank you. I, too, reject the historic nature of the property. And I kind of chuckle myself, twenty twenty is a year that just keeps on giving back. What my sense is here is we have two good-natured families, about the same time working with different architects, coming up with the design of a home that they wanted, and they just didn't know that's what was going on in, in their neighborhood. Because we heard from the architect that the applicant started working before, you know, this, this other architect started working. So I went, okay, you have two different people that have similar tastes going in a similar direction. I look at the pictures, I don't think they, they look identical at all. I think they look complementary. I think the applicant made some good gestures in moving the house back, lowering it down a little bit. I initially thought the massing was just huge, until you start seeing some of the pictures, and you go visit the property, and you see what else is, is going on. You know, so I, I don't think I can support passing this. And I, I kind of agree with Mr. Tal, that it's probably time to send this back with full information, because part of the twenty twenty gift back is I don't think notifications really were given, and I can accept that, you know, the COVID, COVID environment at the time would have suppressed people's willingness or ability to communicate. And I think if there was a good discussion at the appropriate level at that time, we might have a different project in front of us and a different outcome.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Vice Mayor, it seemed to be Mayor Yudi. I also echo the comments. I am greatly concerned, I think you could tell from my initial questions, and even looking at the floor area breakdown, that puts us within ten feet of the maximum. When I added up, I think that that is a real problem, and not what is well-intended, plus the placement on the lot. And then we get to the style, which I did not need to speak to Director Cervantes, but I think we do have a problem while we have complementary houses in other areas of the city. I think being directly across the street and new builds that are essentially very, very similar, does cause me great concern for our community, because these will, because of their mass and style and the close setback potentially of this one, as you enter that street, you will be very well aware, particularly because there are low, modest, one-story homes on the approach. So these will stand out and almost seem like a bookended pair. And I don't think that speaks to neighborhood compatibility, where we really pride ourselves in San Marino of having unique homes. And as we heard from so many residents, that's why people do spend the money, do move here, and it's crucial to continue our community. On the historic note, I perhaps am an outlier. I love branch homes, and I would be thrilled to have a work by a master architect here in town. So I do believe there is potential there for a historical issue, and I'm glad that was brought forward in the appeal. But I think that I would agree for the massing, for the placement, and for the style issues being directly across the street. And finally, the notification or lack thereof, and the problems that we have experienced this year in trying to make the best decisions and involve the community and this type of thing, really speak to a lack of notice. And I don't know, they made attempts to go to the house twice within less than a week in, during construction. To me, does not really show good faith in letting those neighbors know what was going on. And when we went through the list, I think City Clerk Merlo, the speakers here tonight, or those that have sent in comments, I'm now looking at, out of the no responses, which was eight, all but two ended up coming forward and speaking against this project. So to me, that says the neighbors themselves have a compatibility issue, and I think we need to take that into account. So I feel strongly we should either set it for de novo for ourselves or remand it. But I will look to the consensus of my fellow council members as to how they would like to proceed with that. But this does need a look, and we need to talk about the, those other issues that we brought up. So do I have a motion from anybody? Would anybody like to make a motion? Or do we need further discussion on this?
I think if we send it back to the commission, we're probably setting up a better opportunity for the appellant and neighbors to talk, you know, and come up with a resolution. It would be easier in that format than if it came to Oak Knoll, that's my instinct.
The only, the only issue, Mayor, is if we send it back, we can send it back with or without instructions. And sometimes I'm not clear what that is, but if we go without instructions, then I believe that all matters can be considered. Is that, is that correct?
Yes.
So I, I would prefer sending it back without instructions.
All right. And that meaning that they would go over everything that we've discussed tonight, plus make their own inquiries based upon some of the comments submitted, and as well as from the appellant and the applicant?
Absolutely.
May I ask a question?
Thank you.
Yes. And this might be also to council. If we are to send it back, would we be able to make special note of the attempts to notice the legal neighborhood, since that seems to be the essence of the issue?
You certainly can request that the legal neighborhood be renoticed.
And any proof thereof be presented through the report?
They're here.
But that's why we want to make sure we got, because otherwise, we're sending back basically what they've sent us. And that's why I want to make sure we haven't added element to what we are asking them to look at. And the issue seems to be the legal neighborhood given full opportunity in writing to be involved. And then that would make me feel more comfortable in sending it back.
Is there any further construction in that area that might preclude them receiving proper notice?
And it would be in the report what attempts were made. We presume we've got everybody covered, but just in case.
Well, the elder, would that be a requirement if this is sent back to the planning commission?
That's the option that's in front of you, is remanding it back to the planning commission with instructions. The instructions are to the planning commission, and so those instructions could also be for staff, the way I at least interpret the code. So if the instructions are to, for example, to require the applicant to secure signatures of all of the applicants within the legal neighborhood, then that's something that we'll have to do, or they will have to do, and we will verify it.
I think it would be helpful in this particular case because that is one of the main reasons why we want this sent back, and that's just my recommendation.
All right. As Ms. Fisten, Councilmember Wong, do you have any other thoughts as to if we remand this back, how we should proceed?
Actually, I agree with Councilmember Jacobowski about notifying the legal neighborhood.
Thank you. All right. So I think that we need a motion to remand, and within the extra provision that staff would monitor written, no, signature, notification in person with signatures to those on the legal neighborhood. Is there a better way to say that? I don't know if I'm saying it properly, but...
No, let me give it a try. If anybody proposes an amendment, I move to refer pursuant to 230709, 231510, refer the matter back to the planning commission with the instructions that all neighbors in the legal neighborhood be provided both written notice and an opportunity to review the plans with their consent or opposition by signature. Or is that too complicated?
Complicated.
Okay. So with the instructions, Councilmember Jacobowski, what were you thinking?
I was thinking that they receive written notice, preferably signature, but certainly not at that point, whether they agree or disagree. We'll let them come to the meeting and hear more, but we really wanted fully documented that they have received notice, preferably delivered to them either through the mail plus with their signature. And what they do at the beginning is another issue.
Well, I'm going to try to simplify it because I do believe that there is substantial notice as a result, but I move to refer the matter back to the commission with the instructions that due notice be provided the legal neighborhood in writing as required under the code as if it were a first hearing.
And also, I would assume that you would want the usual notification of public hearings as well, whether it was still be published in the newspaper in addition to that.
Yes. So moved. Second.
Your call, please.
Councilmember Wong.
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Tal.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Udi.
Yes.
Mayor Shepard Ramey.
Yes.
Thank you. Can we recess, please, for a five-minute break at this time? Thank you very much, City Manager Wong. I'd like to reconvene and move to the next item on our agenda, under public hearing, item number 15, Appeal of Design Review Number DRC 19-57HP. The address is 1215 St. Albans Road. Can we have a presentation, Director Cervantes?
Thank you, Mayor, council, and members of the audience. The project at 1215 St. Albans Road is to work with the council as the prior one as an appeal of the decision of the planning commission. The project consists of a new two-story house with a two-car garage and a one-car garage. The one-car garage is attached to the house. The lot size is 19,347 square feet and is currently developed with a home that is 2,647 square feet along with a garage. The proposal is to demolish the existing house and the garage and to construct a new 5,193-square-foot home with, as I mentioned, a one-car garage attached to the house and a detached two-car garage. The project was presented to the planning commission on March 25th, May 27th, and on July 29th, 2020. At these meetings, the planning commission expressed concerns about the architectural style of the home, the height of the building, the massing, and the square footage calculations. Despite acknowledging that the architect had made several positive changes throughout the process at the July meeting, the planning commission did deny the project and the 3-2 vote. Staff would like to express, because it wasn't identified in the staff report clearly, that there was an opposition letter that was submitted as part of the record throughout the planning commission process and is part of the record in packet tonight. There was an opposition letter submitted by a nearby property owner expressing concerns similar to that of the planning commission. Subsequent to the denial of the project by the planning commission, a timely appeal was submitted to the city by the owner of 1215 St. Albans Road. As a matter of fact, the applicant submitted a historic assessment report prepared by Sapples Environmental, and the conclusion of this report was that the house did not qualify as a historic resource. This information was also provided to the planning commission during those hearings as well and is part of the record for tonight. With the last, within the last few weeks, the applicant did approach staff expressing interest to remand the project back to the planning commission as it would provide them opportunities for revising the drawings. With that communication, it did express or provide me with drawings of revisions that did show positive movements towards making the project more compatible for neighborhood. There were adjustments to the size of the home, there were also adjustments to the overall height of the home as well. There were several adjustments also made with the smil of those drawings, of changes or tweaks to the architectural style as well, but very minimal. And so given the request of the applicant, that is before the report and the council, staff recommends the city council remand this project back to the planning commission with or without instructions on how to proceed with this project. And so I open for questions.
Thank you very much, Director. I will ask Councilmember Jacobowski, do you have any questions for Director Cervantes at this time?
Thank you, Mayor. No, I don't have a question at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Wong, do you have any questions?
They're not going to make questions. Thank you.
Councilmember Tal.
I have no questions.
Vice Mayor Udi?
No questions. Thank you.
I have two questions. One is, are you aware of the location of the objecting party? Was it somebody within the legal neighborhood? And if so, or was it, you know, a San Marino resident? I believe I read somewhere that it's the neighbor to the rear, but I then thought that there were objections from somebody on one of the sides, so I'm unclear as to the location.
Location is 1237 Old Mill Road, the Padzakis. 121234 Old Mill Road.
1234, okay. So it is the directly behind. Thank you very much for clearing that up. I appreciate that. And my other, excuse me for just a second, was we have the attachment 15-5, which is the planning commission appeal statement, and that was submitted and written by the appellant, the homeowner, property owner, excuse me, of the project. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you very much. So I would like to open the public hearing at this time. Does the applicant wish to address or speak to the council?
Thank you, Councilman Richard McDonald, on behalf of the applicant. Thank you, Aldo, too. This one is, I think, much more straightforward and simpler than the last one in that all of the planning commission hearings had to be done online, beginning with the infamous March 25th meeting. And we, I was brought in after the planning commission heard it, and it became fairly apparent that doing some of these things online is not really the best way to go. Difficult to walk through plans, difficult to have sort of a back-and-forth dialogue. And it struck me that there were some easy ways to fix this, and so I reached out to Aldo about requesting the remand. I think that makes the most sense. I would sincerely hope we can do it in person. It's just very difficult to do plans and have that kind of dialogue between an architect and the commissioners. So that's, we would just request it to be sent back so we can get this ironed out, talk with that neighbor on Old Mill Road, and go from there. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else from the appellate who wishes to speak at this time? Just so you're aware, you have just a little less than nine minutes.
Sure. David, Mayor, and council member, my name is Alex Chang, the architect of the project. First, I would like to address the neighbor on 1234 Old Mill Road to against the project. Part of the reason they have a concern is our pool equipment close to the rear yard. But I would like to let you know that currently, we do have a pool, and the equipment is right along those to the property line, the current pool equipment. Also, there's approximately 30-foot hedges all along the rear property line, and you shouldn't have any privacy issues. However, their concern is about the mix of different architectures. You can read it from their letter, and this is a French electric design and not a Spanish Mediterranean design. During this process, we also approached the neighbor on the south side, which is a very nice couple that I approached, and they do have some concern of our barbecue area. And we worked out the detail, resulted that we eliminate the barbecue area and put more hedges along the south property line to comfort them that there is no privacy issue. And I believe they signed off on that. Let me go back to the design issues. Anytime you design a home in the San Marino, it's all about the street compatibility, which is a very well-stated guideline. And with all of this guideline, I've been working in the city for the last 30 years. Many projects was being designed and approved. On this one particularly, we choose the French electric style. It's very simple because we can identify there's two homes in that area already have a similar style on the street. So our style would not be something that is different from that street. So we think that style is a, which we don't see very much in the city, but the style is compatible. Then we have a lot size, a lot coverage, size of the home. As the staff report points out, you know, in this neighborhood, most homes are 3,000 to 6,000 square feet. Ours started out with a little bit less than 5,200, and want to make the record straight there, we end up with 4,963 square feet, not 5,100 square feet. And we also removed one bedroom from five bedroom to four bedroom. I would like to make this two things be corrected in the staff report. And we end up with a very formal design with the French style. They are identical on both sides with a very low pitch entrance with a column and quality material, which is a slate tile roof. And the defining style of the home can be easily see on the roof, which will have a two sides, two pitch of the roof slope that will really soften the architectural style. Others would be deep recess entries on the bottom and the Julia balcony on the top. Originally, my client asked for a lot more things, such as the garden wall in the front yard, and so for gay on the side and a lot of porches. During the two, three meetings that we have with the planning commission, we simplified and we eliminated the mall. So what we were hoping tonight is we feel that the size, the height, the massing is well within the guidelines, which is 35 feet was at maximum. We proposed a 26 feet, I believe, the last submitted. My client is also willing to come down three more feet to lower the roof, lower the plate height, hopefully that she can have a house to live in. As the historic report stated, that a house is not a significant in architectural style, and the property owners do adjust to me that the garage portion is leaning, there's a lot of roof leaks. They were hoping to change the image on the block, which is a very important image from this block. And I hope that you, Mayor, and the council member give the client a chance to build their dream home. I think the last issue to the planning commission was very close, 3-2 vote. We hope that you can give a chance to go back and we can resolve the massing issue with them. I think by lower three foot of the current design will definitely solve that problem. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have anybody else? Is there any time left for the appellate? There is three minutes and 13 seconds left. Do you have any other representatives that you wish to speak tonight? Thank you. We don't have another applicant, so then we will go to public comments. Do we have anybody who wishes to speak on this, who's here with us tonight? I see we have a member of the public, Ms. Jacobs.
I just want to mention a couple of things. I'm glad that there was a historic report created for this project by Sapples, but unfortunately, it's agenda-driven. I want to tell you a little story. At 1406 Wilson Next Door, that demolition was how I got into this volunteer business of historic preservation. And they had a, it's a high-end, it was a high-end project, and they had a York air conditioning unit, it was a high-end air conditioning unit put in with this new construction. And then the owners promptly put the house on the market, even though they told, you know, council and everybody that they were going to live there. And so the new owners came in, and I didn't really want to complain, but that air conditioning unit was very loud, and every night I hear that, like that. And finally, they replaced it recently, and low and behold, it was actually a counterfeit York air conditioning unit. And I just thought that was kind of interesting because, you know, Mr. McDonald isn't here because he loves San Marino, but he's taking up all this time and he's calling in. And the people that do the historic report for the people for demolition, they're not doing it out of love of San Marino. They're doing it because they want to get paid by someone who wants to tear down a house. Um... You know, Mr. McDonald calls Aldo because the applicant, he's not engaged in the community. He's too busy, he's too rich, he's too whatever, I don't know. But I just feel like it's important that the city does, does the work. And also, please be sure to make sure that there's those, the neighbors are notified and have legible, readable plans in order to make a determination during this public Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else here who would like to speak? Or I will move then to online. Do we have anybody who submitted a comment by email or put up their hand and speak by Zoom?
I do not have any email comments for this project, and I do not see anybody requesting to speak on Zoom.
All right. So then we will close the public comment section of this hearing and bring this back to council. Also, did you get any emails? I'm sorry, City Clerk.
No, I do not have any emails for this item.
I don't know if I asked that and if you said, but I know that we did get some handed to us on various things, particularly the last matter, but I just didn't know if we have any that came in today regarding this. Thank you. All right. So I will bring this back to council for discussion. Do we have any other questions from council members? Councilmember Wong?
No, I don't have any questions, but I think that I can support moving this and refer it back to planning commission.
Councilmember Jacobowski? Questions or comments?
Actually, when you mentioned lowering the plate height significantly, it'll, I think it'll aesthetically blend quite nicely with that lower pitched roof. So I'm pleased to also support sending this back for review.
Thank you. Councilmember Tal?
I have nothing further, you know, comments other than I can support referring it back.
Vice Mayor Udi?
No questions. Thank you.
I had a question, sorry. And I wanted to direct our attention to 1572 and 73. This is the tree list inventory because it's in conflict with the prior page. I'm trying to understand. And now that we have a neighbor, the objection has to do with privacy and also possibly a neighbor on the south side. And I wanted to understand out of the 20 listed trees on this, is, am I correct to understand that 14 are going to be removed for this project?
That's correct.
And is, and also the next page, I think, if I'm looking at the topographic map with the trees full scale, that would be five on the south side, four between the home and the back neighbor, which is the objecting neighbor, and four on the north side. So these are actually ringing the property, the ones that are slated for removal essentially. Am I correct in interpreting that St. Albans being the front is where the remaining six out of 20 would remain?
That's correct.
And all the other 14 are slated for removal?
Correct.
And out of those, all right. Well, that to me speaks volumes. Thank you for clarifying. I didn't bring that up initially, and I was not sure if I was looking at the topographic map correctly. And I wanted to confirm that it is north, south, and the west side, which is all the neighboring properties will have the trees removed between them and this new structure. Thank you. All right. I would affirm personally, I think that this is not a project. I believe that they had three opportunities to go before planning commission. And though I think I discussed with Director Cervantes some of the concerns regarding the staff report here, if you look at the other staff reports, it's clear that there was massing issues throughout as well as design and neighborhood compatibility. And as well, there seems to be issues in my mind for the tree removals and excessive amounts, and that actually works against them. So that directly implicates the privacy of these neighbors, given the design of the structure. And its mass will now tower over everything on that lot regardless. So I would affirm the planning commission's decision. I don't think that this needs to go forward. It's spent a lot of time here before the commissions, as well as staff time have been expended. They've had three attempts and there were variable changes. So to now suggest before us things that we haven't even seen that they are planning to do, to me, is not the matter. We're limited to what was done before planning commission and promises to act in the future should not change our decision that this should be denied. So I personally would affirm the planning commission's decision. Do we have any other comments by council members? Do I have a motion? By anybody?
I move to refer the matter back to the planning commission so that the commission may review the revised plans.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please. Councilmember Wong?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Tal?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Udi?
Yes.
Mayor Shepard Rami? No. Thank you very much. Do we have any written communications or public writings for distribution? Seeing none, or seeing none from, I'm sorry. Our acting City Clerk Merloha looking around trying to figure out, nothing else has come in, and you've kept us informed of everything that you've received?
Correct. They don't have anything additional at this time.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody here wishing to speak on any subject not previously discussed? Seeing none, do we have any comments last on email, Zoom platforms?
No further email comments. Do one last Zoom check. And I do not see anybody requesting to speak on Zoom.
Thank you very much. And thank you both for monitoring that for us tonight. Then I will adjourn the San Marino City Council meeting to Friday, October 30th, 2020, at 8:30 a.m. Oh, excuse me, sorry. Your Zoom meeting Friday morning at 9:30? So I will adjourn this to a Zoom meeting closed session. That's a continuance of the closed session from today at 9:30. I don't know the date of October 16th, 16th or 17th. Okay. On October 16th at 9:30 a.m. Thank you very much for inviting me.